This channel is recording. Is there anyone else here recording this meeting? We will do roll call and alphabetical order. Cheryl Carraway.
Here.
Tim Collins.
Present.
Sean Kennedy. Lisa Murray.
Here.
Rich Redeker.
Here.
Mike Terebasi.
Here.
Michelle Boudreaux.
Here.
If you please stand, Rich will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Praise the Lord.
I do not see our student representatives here this evening.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. It's so hard on here.
Okay, so thank you for being here. I see that Kayden Stelleg is here, so I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. So recently, me and Lani both attended our MARSAR conference for student representatives of like school committee and stuff. So we got a lot of feedback from them. After that, me and Lani started working on a few projects. We're working on at CHOC, all of the students answering a survey of like what they think's going well versus like not going well, like what they think needs to be addressed because me and Lani can only hear so much. So we want to bring back to you guys more of what the other student body is saying, like the rest of it, like the majority versus like the minority groups and stuff. In addition to that, I'm also trying to work with some of the administration and staff at the middle school to hear some of their voices too. In addition to that, so we hear more of the student body than just the older grade because they also have a large impact. We're trying to also get more engagement within the high school students of the SCL learning during advisory. So we're trying to make it more hands-on and get like one week where we do like the Character Strong and the next week where it's like a hands-on activity about whatever the Character Strong lesson is for that day. And then for student council, we had our Scarecrow event September 27th and 28th, where we made, we raised a ton of money for that luckily, so it was very successful. We also had our WAIC conference today and we had our Officer Show on the 25th. And we are looking forward to this Friday night when we are having our lock-in event. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Kayden?
Thank you, Kayden.
Thank you. You can continue with your business. And our speed hub, our guest for our school improvement plans, I believe we are beginning with Mile Tree.
Can you hear me now? I'm also losing my voice, so please bear with me. Just want to, thank you, want to reintroduce myself. I'm Erin Bullock, I'm the new principal at Mile Tree. I am thrilled to be here to talk to you about all the wonderful things we're doing together, the staff and the school community this year. So, here we go. And thank you, Jesse, for the little clicker that we have. Makes a big difference. So I wanted to start by introducing the school council who helped me create the school improvement plan. From our staff, we had Michelle Crotto Hall, Nicole Henderson, Amy Hale, and Judy Farrar. And then for our community members, we had Lyda Van Ness, Diana Breiner, Jessica Karate Howe, and Katie Olson. And I really felt that this council was more unique than I've ever experienced as a principal. They were extremely collaborative, reflective, and engaged throughout the process. And I hope that you can see that through the work that we'll kind of go through tonight. So to start us off, I obviously wasn't here for the 23-25 school improvement plan, so I was speaking with Dr. Provost about how to speak to a plan that I wasn't a part of. And we kind of landed on speaking to the data because there's no opinion there. The data speaks to itself, but that's the route that I decided to go with for this. So some quick hits from that are pretty powerful. So our students at Mile Tree are learning how to read. Our students at Mile Tree have strong number sense across kindergarten and first grade. And our staff collaborate to regularly assess student progress. So each of those is a big success and to have all three, pretty amazing. So our data to speak to those three points, we're focusing on our benchmark data. So our dibbles for ELA and then our universal screener for number sense for math. So I put the beginning of year and end of year data for the 24-25 school year, the most recent, and put up all four categories of how the assessments are graded and categorized for all the students. So we have the well below benchmark, below benchmark, on grade level, and above grade level. And then I put a standout comment at the bottom. So by the end of the 24-25 school year, 72% of kindergarten students were performing at or above grade level benchmark in ELA compared to the 34% at the beginning of the year. So that is a huge, huge celebration there that our teachers were really proud of and our data reflected in this benchmark. And I also got a tidbit that the commissioner told all of us that statewide for kindergarten last year, at the beginning of the year, 42% were significantly below benchmark. And at the end of the year, 20% were still below for kindergarten. But for Mile Tree, the beginning of the year was 36% were below. And at the end of the year, only 16% were below benchmark. Which is, so we're on track, similar to where the state is performing and even a little bit better. And then this year, starting off, we had 43% of students who were performing below benchmark. So we have a greater focus this year and more room for growth when it comes to ELA. Then, switching to first grade ELA, same setup. And the standout celebratory moment was that at the end of the 24-25 school year, 81% of first grade students were performing at or above grade level in reading compared to the 64% who were there at the beginning of the year. So, reading instruction is happening and it is having a powerful impact on our youngest learners. And then up next, we go to kindergarten math. So again, we have our four categories. The categories are very similar, the language is a little bit different for the different screener that we were using. And this is the number of students versus the percentage of students. So by the end of the school year last year, we had 70% of kindergarteners who were demonstrating mastery on the screener compared to the 51% of the students who were at the beginning of the year. And again, big jump, 20-ish percent made that growth in just one year's time. And for the first year, first grade, at the beginning of the year, sorry, by the end of the year, 79% of first grade students were demonstrating mastery on the USNS compared to the 75% at the beginning of the year. All students at the end of year were demonstrating some level of progressing towards mastery. So I find that it's very rare to see the zero when we look at data. So I thought that was an interesting point to call attention to because every single student in first grade was making some kind of progress, which is definitely a celebratory moment. And then, the other celebration that existed before I got there was around the data review system. This is something that upon starting at Mile Tree really stood out to me as a win for us because there is such a significant system in place that was established over the past couple of years that is still having a positive impact on our students and our staff for that matter. So we have intervention cycles that are provided for students who are at risk that last eight weeks. We have intervention review cycles with stakeholders to go over that data from the eight weeks of intervention. And then we are also in between those times, progress monitoring those students to make sure we have a pulse on how our interventions are impacting our students. A lot of good celebrations. And that was when we were meeting at the school council, we were going through, sorry, we were going through the school improvement plan that existed. And it was such an interesting dialogue because I wasn't a part of it and some of our people in the council were also not a part of it. So we were kind of questioning and digging in, doing some research on the things that were listed there so that we could have a better understanding of the school and how we got to where we are now. And then use that to kind of catapult us to our next steps. So, some challenges from the 23-25 school improvement plan and kind of where we are now. Or I should say where we were like first start of July 1st. So, the school has a very well-established tiered approach with MTSS for academics. And there is a goal, a yearning for, the similar approach for behavior, social, emotional. So it's really focusing on, we have a lot of resources, how do we combine them or navigate them so that we're meeting our students' needs across the social, academic, and behavioral approach? And then the other two kind of go hand in hand. There was a change, a couple of changes in administration and the negative impact that that had on the school culture. So, in going through the school improvement plan that existed, I was able to listen to the conversation that was happening. And those things really jumped out at me from even the way that the SIP was written, like the details that were included in it and what was achieved versus what was not yet achieved. And some of that is because of this. So, that paired with my entry plan that I'm doing, which I don't know if I've explained it or not to you, but I'm meeting with every single staff member and as many family members as possible, any students, to ask them the same five questions to learn about Mile Tree and where everyone stands with their opinions on it and what's going well, what needs growth, what needs support, so that I can see patterns and help steer us in the same direction. So I learned a lot about these three things from the SIP, but I also learned about those in those entry plan meetings. I'll do a more formal presentation of that data at a different point, but that kind of helped me with all of this as well. So that was where we were, and now the question is where do we go next? So how are we building on effective systems that currently exist at Mile Tree and supporting the ones that are not yet there? And that's the fun of creating a new SIP. So, excuse me. I put this little tagline in there, which is building on what we have to go further together. When I first started, we had our first professional development together and the word, the theme was together. So we, we really focused in the beginning of the year on kind of like stripping everything back so that we could all start together, learning language expectations, behavioral expectations, instructional expectations, so that we're all using the same mindset and same language with our students and with each other. So you'll kind of see a theme of that togetherness throughout. So, looking at the SIP that we created together, these three things are kind of like the anchors. So strengthening tier one, we are doing a, we have a really big focus on student engagement and how we differentiate it to meet the needs of our students. Paired with regularly weekly analyzing student work so that we're making sure the instructional moves we're doing on a daily basis are supporting every single learner that comes through our doors, which is no small task, I'll tell you that. We're also working on our tiered approach that I had mentioned before for social, emotional, and behavioral skill development. And you'll learn about that a little bit, but two things that we're working on is we created a student support center that is very sensory-driven. So it's a former office that we took all of that out and we did, with the help of Josh, thank Josh, we did a lot of research on resources that really help students get some kind of sensory release when they're dysregulated or to help them be regulated. So that could be different furniture, it could be fidget, it could be different drawing, art, or something like that. So it's a really safe place that has different lighting and sound to help us meet that tier-two social, emotional need. And we're also making sure that our whole staff is trained in responsive classroom. Many staff have been there for a long time and have received training. So all the new staff that I brought on this year went through training over the summer and we're working through continuous PD throughout the year. And then, just put the word together because that's what it is. We're collectively building our staff's capacity, myself included, around behavior, instruction, and culture. Because I, my approach with our staff is that I'm here to be the new principal, but I'm here alongside you to learn with you, to try new things together, to be vulnerable. So that's kind of my entry point with my staff there. Now we get to the school improvement plan. So I believe this is how all the principals are doing it. We just kind of take a snapshot of each objective from the school improvement plan. I won't read every single word to you because you want to hear my dying voice over here. But I will give you a quick synopsis of the strategic goal. So the strategic goal, the first one is all about using high-quality instructional materials that has already existed. We are going further with it. So we are taking the high-quality instructional materials and practices and analyzing the student work that is produced when those resources are implemented and what our teachers are teaching with that. And that comes out in our weekly common planning that the instructional coach, Sarah Wright, and I facilitate together. We are analyzing work and going through a protocol to then make instructional moves based on what we see in the data. And another big thing that you'll see a couple of times is the second bullet here in the bottom part, the reflection opportunities. So a big thing, transparently, I'm trying to make sure that I have a consistent pulse on Mile Tree and the happenings within it. I don't want the staff to go through another vote of no confidence. So I'm trying to find avenues to hear the voices so that I can make sure we're consistently supporting what needs to be supported. So we have built in reflection into our school improvement plan so that the voices, not one voice, but all of our voices are heard around the decisions that we are making together. Because if, if we are constantly providing feedback and we have a better read and we can go further together in the places we want to go and need to. The second goal, second objective, is all around school climate for both students and staff. You'll notice this one is really long. My council and myself, we felt there was a lot of items that needed to be included in this goal. As you can see, Sarah, because it's such a big thing for any school, but definitely a school who went through several administrative changes last year. So, we are really rooting this objective in the systems that already exist, but making more intentional moves based on the impact those systems are having. For example, the, we have all these social, emotional resources, but based on the SIP and the conversation I learned about, there wasn't a follow-up. So, we're tracking SWISS data, but what are we doing with it? We have behavioral incidents, but that student that had one, is there a repeating of that incident? Is there communication with families? All the things. So just making sure that we're going deeper with the resources we already have. There's another reflection piece in here, which I think is, we've already done this one once so far this year, which led to a very interesting conversation around having a joint conversation with staff and myself around what's working and what's not. And then problem solving together on how we can address the things that need changing. And those things are all happening in either common planning times, weekly, or faculty meetings. Third one. This one is, again, we already have MTSS in place, but we're trying to further develop it. So we are, similar to what we've already talked about, providing more professional development, analyzing data more consistently and with more intention. And then making sure we communicate regularly with families so that they know what's going on with their child in school. Two more. Doing great. Up next, we have strategic goal number four, which is around building active partnerships with families. This one, when we were collaborating on it, really led to a surprising dialogue for me with families because we had four community members who were all saying there was some different challenge with communication in the school. Whether it was not frequent enough or the sense of urgency felt between a situation from families in school wasn't in alignment or whatever the reason was. So we spent a lot of time here trying to iron out what's important to go forward this year. We have a ton of events, we have a fabulous PTO, we have all these systems that exist that are not here because these things are new to the school this year or a new focus. So we really wanted to create a purposeful communication with parents. So we wanted to do some surveying to figure out what they want communication about and how they want to receive it. And then making sure we have dialogue from teachers and staff to families, but also from administration. We're really trying to break down that fourth wall between school and home so that there are no mysteries. We're not doing anything that we don't want to celebrate with families. We just need to make sure we're celebrating with the families. And the last one. This one was also super interesting. The previous goal talked about creating leadership opportunities at Mile Tree and I think in the district in general, but it was all around stipended positions and just creating like liaisons and team leaders and things like that. That exists already, so it's not up there. But they, we decided as a team was how can we elevate and empower the people on our staff to take on leadership roles like facilitating a professional development, something along those lines, so that everyone feels that their voice and their subset matter because it does and they do. So, we came up with these bullet points and I've already started conversations around who wants to be involved and how do you want to be involved because I'm not, it's not just me leading. I obviously have a role in that, but I am working with really experienced and empowered staff that know their stuff. So we want to be able to build each other's capacity with sometimes having the colleagues facilitate that. And that's all I've got. Thank you. Do you have any questions? You're welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I appreciate your honesty and vulnerability with eating your challenges that have occurred at Mile Tree and appreciate the intentional approach that you're taking into using the direct tree plan and incorporating that into your, into strengthening your school community. I'm sure it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you ever need any help from us, just let us know what you need.
I would love to have you come tour, pop in the classroom so we can talk about that, but thank you for offering.
Okay, I'll take you up on that.
So next we have, Doretha, does he don't have it?
Do we maybe have something we can wipe down the microphone with so we don't pass the sickness along?
I'm very good at sanitizing. This is what happens when you work in an elementary school. It's good. Yeah, thank you. All right, so thank you all for having me here tonight to share our Stony Hill School Improvement Plan. Much like all of our other schools, we also have started the year off with the theme of everyone counts. For us at Stony, that means not only just our staff and our students, but the community, families, really anyone connected to our school is a part of it and we want them to feel like they matter and they're important. I'm very grateful that our team, our school council team, was the school council team that was with this plan last year, but then also are willing to stay on again this year. So I'm very grateful for our staff, our staff members, Cara Hatch, who's our school nurse, Julie Kimby, who's a second grade teacher, as well as our family representative, Aunt Megan Michelle, and Katie Olson. She's a busy lady, I didn't realize she was on the team. And, you know, it was wonderful to be together with this team over the summer, having worked alongside them last year. They were very willing to come in and get this work started and I'm so very grateful for them in the creation of our next two-year plan. So one of the things I wanted to make sure that we highlight first is we, we know that the foundation of student and overall school success really are built on relationships. And one of our biggest highlights and successes was around our recent SQM data survey. And it highlights our climate and culture at Stony Hill. Students and teachers both reported feeling understood, supported, and accepted by our entire school community. Another important measure highlights the strong student and teacher relationships where students reported feeling respected and cared for by their teachers. And I know similarly to all of you, as a parent and as an educator, that is by far of the utmost importance for me, especially stepping into this role in leading the school. So I'm so proud of just all the connection and the strength that we already have and hope that that will continue within our next plan. Our other successes are around our MTSS system for academics. So over the last two years, a really strong system for academics has been created and implemented. We have four intervention cycles that we're able to have every year. Progress was monitored throughout each of these cycles and interventions were adjusted as needed based on student needs. Both attendance and fidelity to these programs were monitored. Classroom teachers and interventionists were both able to facilitate small groups in each of these four cycles. It was able to maximize the amount of students that were supported through this. And we had 14 teachers and our literacy interventionists both have math and literacy groups, which were up to six students in each group, which meant that we were able to give extra support to 120 students in literacy and up to 120 students for math as well. So extending on these successes, this year, teachers worked collaboratively to form groups that allow now for cross-classroom groupings for us to be able to best support the individual needs of our students. Continuing. Sorry. Continuing on part of our MTSS successes, this just highlighted- this just highlighted a quick snippet of some of our recent math data. So this was taken from the 24-25 school year around a benchmark that we use through Imagine Math. You can see grade two, we have no one below benchmark by the end of the school year. And you can see those trend lines for third grade definitely showed great improvement by the end of the year, which again highlights the success of our MTSS structures that we have in place for academics. The great thing about this program is that it's also able to create individualized pathways for students that can elevate their math concepts or support them in their areas of need. Although our overall literacy data didn't show as much growth as we had hoped, and I'll talk about that in just a bit, but one of the biggest things that stood out to our school council when we were looking at this was our data around oral reading fluency. So in these graphs, the top one is our grade two, which at the beginning of the school year, 56% of our students were reading at or above grade level on our DIBL screeners. And by the end of the school year, 87% of students were at or above grade level. For third grade, similar scores started off the year at 58% of our students at or above grade level. And by the end, 83% of our students were reading at or above grade level. So again, overall, didn't see the growth that we hoped, but we do see these break spots and improvements in our kids' reading abilities. And we're hoping to capitalize on that moving into our next plan. Some of our SIP challenges that we had this past year, one was around co-teaching. In a perfect world, co-teaching would work in every grade level, in every classroom. And we always set it up to be that way at the beginning of the school year. We have created schedules. We have trained staff. We have paired them. And then what happens? Students move into town. We have other students that need extra support. And the beautiful schedule that we created in the summer is now very disjointed. And we need to rearrange and have special educators now supporting in other classrooms and not really being able to fulfill that co-teaching model. This is something that our school council felt strongly. That was something that they wanted to keep trying and to perfect this year. So that is definitely an area of growth for us. We're going to be looking closer at scheduling and staffing, making sure we're really honing in on our grid minutes and what students really need for support. Also to make sure that we're not over-supporting students. Especially in third grade, we do want to make sure we're building that independence so they can continue to be successful as they move on to Soul Road. So this is really an area that we're going to be working on this year. Two of the key takeaways that we have around our literacy growth challenges that we had this past year that we're hoping are going to be more positive as we move into our next year's plan. The commissioner recently shared some data with us and took a closer look that only 13% of students who were significantly below benchmark at the beginning of second grade were able to meet or exceed expectations on the third grade MCAS. And that only 4% of students who were significantly below expectations at the beginning of third grade were able to meet or exceed benchmark on the third grade MCAS. These were kind of sad, disappointing results for us, but we are seeing already some promising results within our first fall screener this year, where we're having some decreases in those percentages with our students starting off this year. So we're really going to be focusing on literacy moving forward to really build up all the areas for our kids. So looking ahead to our next plan, we are really looking to elevate our teams. We have some grade structures and systems in place around tier one. So we really want to make sure that those are very strong, perfectly in place so we can begin to elevate our tier two work. Being able to support that many students in small groups, we really want to make sure that we're capitalizing on the time that we have with kids and not just using technology as their intervention. The second piece to that is much like at Mile Tree, we have these grade systems in place for academics. And we have really wanted to model that and mimic that for our social emotional learning. So I'm happy to say we already have that plan ready to go and are rolling that out on December 8th with students so that they can receive some intervention within SCL. We're really excited to get that going. So I think as a staff, this ran true through school council, through our staff meetings and things that everybody is on board. Like we have this strong system, let's do the same for SCL. So we're excited for that. Similarly to the rest of our schools, we sort of have five actions, action planning umbrellas that we're going to be working under. The first one is curriculum. And so again, really strengthening that tier one and continuing to work together as a staff to have those professional, have those professional development opportunities that really are going to benefit staff and ultimately our students. So we have some action steps we're going to do to work towards that. The biggest one is being able to provide a differentiated PD. Much like the students that are in our classrooms, they all come to us with varying experiences and areas of strength. And so the staff is the same way. So we want to make sure we're providing PD to them that is meaningful to them and that can help support them in their work. The second is around climate and culture. And this is where we're really excited to be able to elevate that tier two work around SCL, working very closely with our school psychologists and our school adjustment counselor who have really taken this project on and run with it. And I'm so grateful for them to be able to do that. Our entire staff was presented with the plan earlier this week during our professional development time together, where we're planning to be able to offer two different interventions around SCL, one of them being check-in, check-out. So for those that haven't heard or don't have experience with that, a student checks in every day with a trusted adult and then checks out with them at the end of the day. And we had 20 staff members that have already volunteered to be part of that. And they're not just all classroom teachers. It's our professionals, it's our custodian, it's our school nurse, it's our admin assistant. So everyone is really jumping on board to help out, which is great. And every single student in our building has a special connection with someone, and it's not always a classroom teacher. So we do want to make sure we're honoring that. The next is around our student support and success. And this is connected to really goal two, making sure we're continuing to enhance our systems around MTSS. This is also some work around our tier three team, helping to monitor our students around absences, behavioral incidents, and really being able to support students in a way that's meaningful. Next is a communication. And so making sure that we're being able to communicate with families, again, in a meaningful way that's not too much or too little. We heard a lot of feedback last year around our communication was too much and too frequent and in too many spots. So we were able to streamline that a little better this year moving into the school year. And we've had very positive feedback about the amount of things that are coming home and when they're coming home. Teachers are also able to communicate with families and will continue to do so in class dojo, emails. We just had our parent conferences this week. And teachers are always willing to meet with families to connect about kids. And then lastly is our leadership. So much like at Mile Tree, we are really hoping to build our capacity within our schools. Our staff always comes with a wide variety of strengths, and we want to be able to use them in a way that's helpful to everybody. So throughout the school year, we're hopeful that other staff, not just the ones that are participating in those stipended positions, but staff that feel confident in their skillset to be able to support other staff members in their different roles in our building. Do you have any questions?
I gotta say, for two, you know, brand-new teachers out of the gate, you're doing great. You both are doing great. Jess, you've been at that school, so I think you had a little insider information on what really needed to be done. But that's still, it's great. I'm so happy with both of you. And again, if you do need anything, and I will be coming.
Yeah, the offer stands. You're welcome anytime. Feel free to pop over. We'd love to have you.
See, you just said that, "pop over." So you just pop in?
Yep.
All right.
Whenever.
There you go. See you tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. Don't go to Mile Tree though. We're hoping you'll rest tomorrow, so.
All right, you rest, I'll come to you next.
We're hoping she rests. Yeah, you're welcome anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll continue with the Assistant Superintendent for Finance Operations and Human Resources.
Good evening. There's two things I have for you tonight. First is just the monthly budget update. It's a fairly uneventful budget update, which is, from my point of view, always the way we'd like them to be. Uneventful's a good thing. So I bring out two points for your attention. One is just, we have, if you notice through the grid of numbers there, there's some places where we're running a negative balance. And in those cases, we do have resources that will be applied. So some of it's an accounting thing. Mentioned this last month as well. But we should be getting the reimbursement from the Fair Share Amendment appropriation fairly soon. We've sort of done our due diligence within the systems that Desi has in place. And so we're waiting for them to respond, and we'll look at our resources. The other thing I wanted to point out is, if you look at the sort of bottom of the chart, you'll see that there's some concerning things relative to our tuition out students. And they're really, they are and they aren't concerning. So one piece of it is that we have a significant number of encumbrances relative to out-of-district students. Some of that will be covered by our Circuit Breaker Fund. So we have a substantial amount of Circuit Breaker funding that came to us for work we did and cost incurred in previous years. We use that to help mitigate some of our costs this year. So we'll apply that as we go through the year. But you'll also notice that there are some highly expected encumbrances relative to, where is the right designation here? The collaborative tuition. So, you know, we put this together starting really this time of year. And we have ongoing conversations with Josh and his staff about what they think are going to be kids' placements. But those change over time. And kids' needs change over time. And so where they may be placed changes over time. And so sometimes we have to adjust our budget to accommodate that. And so what we're seeing here is just a probably, you know, an additional expectation of a placement in a collaborative. Whereas, you know, if you look up a couple of lines, there's some lines that are well under budget. And so they'll be able to transfer that resource to help cover that cost. And so I bring it to your attention just because there's a fluidity in working with, you know, human beings and what their needs are, especially kids, and especially kids that need an extralabel support, like we see with some of these placements. Some of these placements are also for vocational kids. And so some of that's a billing question. So, you know, if the vocational schools that we work with outside of CTEC haven't built us yet, it looks like we're sitting in really good shape. And we are. And at some point in the next couple of months, we'll get a bill and that will correct itself. But so there's a variety of reasons why you see these sort of, you know, imbalances that seem concerning perhaps. But at present, I'm not worried about them. And we'll be working our way through those as we go through the year. And some of it's going to be a need to sort of shift some resources from one place to another to cover the cost. But again, you know, as we look at the picture as we know it today and thinking about our resources, like our Circuit Breaker funding and that sort of thing, I think we're still in very good shape. So I'll pause here and see if there are any questions about that. Right now, I'll move on. So I put together a very short memo relative to action taken by the MSBA board directors. They met on October 29th. And I was able to, you know, attend the meeting and provide a very, very brief, because there were 45 districts and 93 projects that were getting approved. Among most of other things, their agenda took them well over two hours to get through. But nonetheless, the three projects that we submitted statements of interest for, so that would be the roof at Mile Tree, the roof at Stony Hill, and the doors and windows at the middle school, were all approved for invitation into the MSBA process. I think that one of those fortunate pieces of information in them's, you know, besides them just admitting us into the process, was they followed that up with a letter which indicated what is called a commencement date or a start date. And that sort of starts the clock for all the things that we need to do relative to these projects. And so fortunately, they set that date as a commencement date of March 2nd. From that commencement date, certain things have to happen. So a bunch of things, as you'll see on the little grid in the memo, are things that I'll have to do, staff at the Town Hall will have to do because these buildings are all owned by the Town of Wilbraham. But there are a few action items that will be necessary. And particularly, you know, funding is being one of them. It'll be a particular boat language that the school committee will have to take into account. But what's fortunate with the March 2nd start date is that it gives us, you know, the first set of deadlines are 90 days. They actually give us 91 because they go to the, the 90-day is the Sunday, the 31st. So they moved it to June 1st. So we actually get an extra day because of the weekend. In that timeframe, there's, like I said, a fair amount of work that staff will do to put together various pieces of information for them. But then in that window of time, there'll need to be an appropriation made for funding for feasibility and schematic design. And so that'll be the first threshold that we have to meet in order to continue to stay in the process. So it's also fortunate that gives us, really through our regular budgeting cycle and capital conversations with the towns, opportunity to engage them in going through this and working on how we approach these projects, how we fund these projects, how we fit them into the larger capital plans that are in the beauty, and all of those sorts of things. Once we hit that 90-day threshold or that 90-day due date for things like funding for feasibility study and, of course, paperwork, the next major hurdle from the standpoint of our deadlines is about a year later when we would have to have full project funding if we had moved ahead in the process. And so again, it aligns with the annual town meeting schedule. And so we should be able to, you know, if there are, you know, in absent of any other conditions, if we were to move ahead with this project, we really can do some funding in, you know, this spring town meeting cycle and again, the following town meeting cycle to fund the project and get them underway. I think that what has happened as a result of this being moved forward is it prompts some deeper questions about how we think about our facilities and our needs over the coming years, the resources that we'll need, the investments we want to make in buildings. I reached out to the MSBA today around some questions, you know, that kind of surfaced and what are part and parcel of the process they go through in the schematic design and feasibility. How does that differ in the accelerated repair program, which is what we're in versus a core program? There's a depth of review and analysis that's done in the core program where they're building a building from scratch to look at enrollment projections, educational plan, those type of things. In accelerated repair, it's not quite as extensive as that, but I wanted to give a better sense of what all's involved. We have very old buildings that have some significant needs, local needs. These things being sort of one piece of the puzzle. But one of the things that comes with accepting this support from the MSBA is a commitment to use those buildings for educational purposes, for essentially the useful life of the thing that they're investing in. So we want to be thoughtful about that and thinking about those buildings, their capacity, their lifespan, and how we as a people want to approach those and approach these projects. The, you know, we get the invitation into the accelerated repair program. There are a number of steps we have to take in order to remain in the process. There's things we have to do and due diligence we have to accomplish in order to remain in the process. And so we'll go through those. And, you know, as was evidenced at the meeting we had at the core meeting on the 29th, you know, there are times when districts opt out and they have every expectation that that's going to happen. You know, for a number of reasons, sometimes the communities can't, you know, get the funding. As much as people might want to do projects, they just, the voters don't support them. Or, you know, they may make an alteration in what they think their needs are and their facilities planning. So there's a lot of different ways to go through this. But we're in a fortunate place where we have this opportunity. Last year, they haven't done the analysis, but last year, the reimbursement rate for eligible costs for our district was 57%, just over 57%. So I presume it'll be something of that sort. So any of the costs within the total project that are eligible costs will be reimbursed. They'll give us 57 cents. We have to put in 43 cents on every dollar. If we decide to have extra things or do other things that don't fall within the... If we decide to have extra things or do other things that don't fall within the, you know, the sort of scope of things that are covered by MSBA, then those would be fully on us to own and fund. But as we think about our facility needs and thinking about our projects, and when do we want to do certain things, and, you know, there may be an economic scale to do certain kinds of work while we're at it. It can also be a slippery slope, but sometimes if you've got, you know, certain kinds of work happening, doing other work adjacent to that can be cost-effective, even if you're not getting reimbursed. So there's a whole host of questions to be addressed and things to work through, but fortunately, we've got a little bit of time with them giving us a March start date, so I'm looking forward to that and your feedback and questions about the process and what we plan to do.
Well, congratulations on getting, I've never heard of this before, where three projects have been approved in the same year. I haven't heard that from anyone, so congratulations on that. And if it's anywhere near the 52%, what a massive savings for the Town of Wilbraham to have, you know, close to 60% of this project covered by the state from those, that extra money, what is it, the extra penny or something like that, right? So all those pennies add up. Yeah, I know that we are presently, we just had the roofs done for the middle school, so I know that that's definitely on our list of buildings to use for the next 20, 30 years. So it'd be nice to kind of finish up those, but, you know, we should sit down, we should talk about this, but just enjoy the moment, so congratulations.
Yeah, Doug, I'd like to appreciate, you know, you and John, I know you both put in a lot of hard work, and you must have put forward a very good professional face that the state's like, okay, we're gonna do all great. I, if anyone listens to the Wilbraham Select Board meeting from Monday night, you know, I think after their next meeting, they're going to be sending us a letter to compel us to very seriously start thinking about what the future of middle school education is going to look like in our school district. And I'm not going to pretend to know what it should look like. You know, as a resident, the empiric understanding I have is that we are missing six to eight classrooms in Wilbraham Middle School, and that we are currently missing a library, and that the building is very old, and that we have tiles with asbestos in them peeling up. So, you know, I think that there are definitely multiple pathways to go, right? And the windows and door project, right, is step one on one pathway, right, where there's, you know, several projects, each of which will probably be $7 to $10 million in scope to update things that are in the building and eventually add on the necessary classroom space. You know, but I think that the Wilbraham Select Board is asking a very good question as to, you know, is, you know, is this, is this the building for us for the next 20 years? Like, and thank you so much, John, for including in the packet of the NESTA. So, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at the projections for grades six to eight. We've currently got 613 students in the middle school, give or take, according to this prediction they did, and in 10 years, they're predicting we're going to have 773. So, another 160 students into the regional middle school building, assuming we continue with a single regional middle school building, which is another big ask right up in here, right? There could always be the reintroduction of middle school education in the end, too. We shouldn't be so close-minded for that. But, I mean, I think that, the more I think about it, the more I realize I don't know, right? So exactly what will the needs be? Do we need six to eight more classrooms? Do we need a library in the middle school? What else is needed in the middle school for education? I know Tim's brought up woodshop, and it's probably a luxury item, but, you know, I did some looking, there's a lot of middle schools in Massachusetts that have woodshops in them. And I was back home in New Jersey with unfortunate circumstances, but reflecting that, I had woodshop when I was in middle school, in a different state. So, like, so I think the first question to answer is, what do we need for the regional middle school education? And then, what would it look like for the current Wilbraham Middle School to fill in that as the regional building? You know, I guess there's comprehensive assessments or whatever that can tell us, you know, what those kind of things would cost. And then that opens the doorway then to the alternative, right? The core building program that you brought up, which is, you know, which is a whole nother process to enter into, where, you know, the end result could be deciding to walk away from that middle school building, in, you know, as La Meta just discovered that they have to do, right? That they discovered that their middle schools, which I think are about the same use as ours, you know, were going to cost more to bring up to meet the students' needs than construction of a new building, as we discovered over 10 years ago with our high school here in this district. So I'd like to hear, John and Doug, from you guys, what does that process look like, right? Is there some, yeah, I certainly don't want any of the politicians here involved in that. I think, you know, but there should, I think we have people with the knowledge and expertise to start a process, and then, and then what are the steps down the road where we kind of figure out what we're doing? Do our due diligence for the taxpayers. I certainly don't want anyone strapped with the cost of the new middle school, but I certainly don't want anyone strapped with more than the cost of the new middle school for the old middle school. So, and I don't know how to answer that. Like, if I was shopping for a car, I think I would be much more better equipped to figure out what we need to do and how we need to be, you know, as responsible as possible with the tax paid dollars. But just the windows and doors, we're looking at $7 million. You know, we have, I have no, I'm excited to hear, or I'm anxious to hear what the asbestos tiles that are now peeling up in the middle school are going to cost as an emergency expense, right? And then we haven't even gotten to extra classrooms, library, and I bet there's other things that we just don't even know about yet.
I guess my first thought about that is that, as Doug and I were looking at these projections, I think the conversation is a little bit more comprehensive than just middle school, because you accurately said there'd be 150 more students in the middle school in 10 years, if these projections are right. But that means in five years, there's 150 more students in kindergarten, and then first and second grade, third and fourth. So I'm thinking about how to address the entire portfolio of schools below the high school level, I think is something that we have to do. And so I would say that we'd want to include people in those discussions that have expertise, not only in middle school education, but also what the needs of early childhood education, what the needs of upper elementary education are, and think about the problem as a whole. I don't know if that's very helpful, but that's just sort of my initial thoughts about it.
I would also take it a step further, John, right? What will public education look like in five years and 10 years? It's interesting, because when I started on the committee 10 years ago, that was something I was saying, what is education going to look like in 10 years? Little did we know that COVID would come and change it, so that now we do so much more, you know, online learning or through the computer learning and such like that, that we had, you know, no idea what was going to come down the line. So with another 10 years to look in the future, you know, what is the education? Now, I know that we have the career, innovation career pathways, and that is what we believe is going to be the path forward, but how that looks five years, 10 years, you know, and with everything else, technologies, when we get the chips that we can put on our head, you know, and suddenly we have all knowledge that are in our head already, or whatever they come up with, right? So, yeah, we really have to look at everything, because investing in our future 20 and 30 years is, it's a lot of future.
So, to the innovation career pathway, which is also awesome, I love it, but, you know, a lot of people in town may declare to us that they really don't want to see all the eighth graders in the high school. And of course, looking at this well-put-together info from NESTA, doesn't, also doesn't look like that'll work out. How many eighth graders are currently attending construction in high school as part of the innovation pathway?
We have 20 at this time.
20 at this time, okay. So, and, you know, and that's, but not, and how many eighth graders do we have in total in the regional school district?
That's actually in the packet. I'm just, so, we have 197.
Okay. All right, so some, but, you know, and, you know, maybe in a few years, that number might double to 40, but I'm not thinking that we're going to see the majority of the eighth grade in the high school, at least based on the feelings of people in town. And I don't know, like, you know, there's something to be said for the middle school model, which our town has chosen to invest in, and I certainly believe in, and what I see yourself in either. So what do we do now?
So I'll offer a couple of broad, but not specific suggestions. I think one of the things that communities will do, sometimes school district, but sometimes communities as a whole, will look at all of their infrastructure and do a visioning process relative to their buildings and their, you know, the capital needs, and try to forecast out in the future. It's always challenging, because as Mr. Kennedy noted, you know, the nature and kind of education changes so much, and, you know, things we did 10 or 15 years ago are very different than we do now. You know, the rate of change is more accelerated than ever before. I think, you know, the advent of AI is going to really change the game in a long ways. And at the same time, you know, people are recognizing the need for, and the value in things like project-based learning. So, you know, it may not be woodshop. Some places use more generic term like maker spaces, where, again, you do project-based learning, where you're trying to integrate multiple skills simultaneously to have a deeper and richer and, you know, interlinked type of learning that's going on for folks. So I think those are all the kinds of things that would have to be kind of considered. And I think the other thing that often is in the conversation about building school buildings, where they're thinking, oh, buildings should last 50 years, is how do you make the space as flexible and adaptable as possible so that it can change as your needs change? You know, for those of you that are close to my age, you may have experienced, you know, pod-style or large group space, which was very trendy in the early '70s. You know, I went to classrooms like that. You know, it was a very thematic thing in the, at that time in education. I think it worked well for some students and then not well for other students, and some districts, you know, build schools with large pod classrooms, and then five or six years later went, mm, that's not working for us, and then closed them in, others left, and then worked around the sort of infrastructure. So I think we want to be understanding that we're, you know, we're going to be trying to make decisions with really imperfect information and no clear and absolute right answers, and so we just have to be aware of that as we go through the process, that we're not going to be talking absolutes generally, other than, you know, it's expensive, that's pretty much an absolute. We will, you know, make commitments to things that will have long-lasting and potentially hopefully positive impacts. So I think, you know, thinking through, like, as the superintendent said, you know, sort of five years from now, that cluster of kids is going to be in kindergarten, and how do we work within the spaces and structures and places we have now? Are there steps we take more immediately to create space with buildings we have? But I think visioning out, you know, what that looks like over time is, you know, what we'll do, and then, of course, you make that sort of plan, and then immediately start adjusting as you live with it. So I think that's probably the direction we'll go, but we'll, you know, we'll have to make some concrete decisions in six months' time or so. So we'll have to make some choices about where we are and understand the implications, you know, if we decide not to go forward in MSBA process, what are the implications of that? You know, the accelerated repair program is on every year cycle, so if you step out of that, you're waiting a while before you can get back in. Likewise, you know, the core program, which has, you know, the bigger project type stuff, they do that every year, and they don't do nearly as many of them. So, you know, there's a lot of different pieces that are in the puzzle as we discuss this and think about it as we move forward.
One other thing that I think is important for answering your question is being responsive to what exactly that letter is requesting. One of the things that is important for partnership is all the buildings we're talking about are Wilbraham-owned buildings. They're not district-owned buildings, so it's not as though the district could sort of unilaterally say, these are the buildings we're going to create for the region. There needs to be, I think, a partnership and enmeshing of what we see as the vision for the district with what the town sees as its vision for properties that it wants to own.
Any other questions or comments for Doug or John? Okay, well, it's now time for a public comment. Is there anyone here that's interested in making public comment this evening? Okay, with that, we'll continue with subcommittee updates. Curriculum Subcommittee?
No update.
Planning Committee? We did touch on some pieces of the conversation we had the other night, so we discussed that both select boards, I believe that they are looking to schedule a meeting to determine how the repairs will be handled in the regional agreement. We discussed our plan on socializing and holding listening sessions for stakeholders regarding the regional agreement, so people getting their regional agreement out to the public and making sure that they understand the changes, the implications, and the impact on everybody, because we need to prepare for presenting this and having it on the board for the spring town meetings in Wilbraham and Wilbraham. There was a discussion about a coordinated timeline for the MSBA projects and regional agreement at town meeting, and it was mentioned and requested that a plan for building usage, a plan for building usage when considering the MSBA projects before going to the voters. So I think we just had a little bit of that discussion right now, so that's an ongoing conversation. We do not have another meeting scheduled at this time. Does anyone have anything else to add to that?
If I may, the issue with the middle school and how to deal with the improvements that are, some are needed, and that towns are still working out an agreement that they can both support. So I think they have a meeting, I hope, scheduled soon, and we can get that taken care of.
Okay, so we'll continue with Finance Operations and Technology Subcommittee.
We are meeting on Monday, the 12th, in the executive, in the conference room for the district.
Okay, so we'll continue with the, I'll be the collaborative representative. Lisa?
Nothing to report.
Negotiations Subcommittee, nothing to report. Policy Subcommittee, Mike?
If it's okay with people, what I'm going to do is, we have some up for a second reading. I'm going to do, I'm going to skip the first two, second reading initially, because I think there might be some discussion. So I'm going to start with second reading for GBEBC, Gifts to and Solicitations by Staff, JJE, Student Fundraising Activities, KBE, Relationships with Parent Group to Organizations, ECAB, Access to Buildings and Grounds, EFBA, School Food and Nutrition, Meal Modifications, KBG, Parent Advisory Council, Middle School Career Pathway Exploration, which doesn't have a letter of determination, but is for the book, EFE, Civil Rights, Complaint Policy for Child Nutrition Programs, EFER, Civil Rights Complaint Procedures, HWRC, School Nutrition Department. Nutrition Department. Now, the first two that are in the agenda, the IKFE, Competency Determination, and the IKF, Graduation Requirements. So the IKF, Graduation Requirements, basically, the edit to that was the removal of all the competency determinations, because there's a new policy, the first one, the IKFE, that has the competency determinations. There was a good bit of discussion on, on this first one in the policy Subcommittee meeting around the potential for testing and stuff. In the end, we decided to keep it as recommended. However, if there are any members of the committee that wish to bring it up for discussion at the full committee, I told them that they could, and if they wanted to suggest an amendment, that they certainly would be welcome to. That's it. I'm ducking all you down the river. All right, I'm making sure you're gonna be here tonight. Do you got a diploma?
Thank you. So my concern is, when we stand up on the stage to pass out diplomas, that everybody has a minimum competency in, in reading, math, civics, and that there's no way around it, that in other words, there's no easy, you know, everybody should be able to have passed a certain level of those, in those subjects to get a diploma from Minnetoka. There shouldn't be some kind of alternate route to graduate without, without proving that you're proficient in certain things, especially nowadays with kids that go home and AI can do a lot of the homework, you can have portfolios, you can do all kinds of things, but how do you really ever test if somebody can figure out a tip on a, on a restaurant bill, or can add two and two? You have to give them a test in a class without using any electronics, and they should be able to pass those certain kind of competencies. Now, in this policy, they list all these courses that you need to pass, all these credits that you need to pass. And in our meeting, Principal Hale was there, and he said, he said, you know, can you pass these tests without, can you pass these courses without passing the midterm or final test? The answer is yes, this only counts like twenty percent for the test. So Kenny could come in and actually pass without really knowing that much, without having to prove that he knows a certain minimal level of competencies. Now, just interesting, I was just overseas, and I was at some conferences, educational conferences, in Istanbul and Bangkok last week, and I asked the person on my left, who was actually from Bangladesh, and I just said, you guys have to pass the test to get out of school. And he, Bangladesh is, I think, the fifth-largest country by population in the world, and he said, he took the test in the nineties, he said, yep, and forty-five percent pass, and they do it on purpose. If you don't pass, you go into the trades, or you go to the Middle East to be a laborer. And he said back in the nineties, when he took it, that there was not multiple choice. You had to write everything out, it was a national test, and that nowadays, he felt the young people had it easy, because it's on multiple choice. This is a guy from Bangladesh. On the other side of me was a young woman from China, she was probably in her twenties, and she did not like having to take the test, I asked her that too. She failed it the first time, passed it the second time, seventy percent passed in China, and she said it's a national test, and certainly by having to study hard over and over again to pass that test, she got into college and has two masters now, but it gave her the basis to be able to go ahead and go on. And somebody from India asked him, and they're, he said, all the, this is like most of the world's population, and eighty-five percent pass, and said that, yep, you know, you studied for like your last year to pass these national tests, and you don't get a diploma if you don't pass, you have to have a certain knowledge. And that's why when I work with all those people that have got a high school degree from overseas, they all have a basis of knowledge, they're all actually very, 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 they're literate, they know the math, they know the civics, and they're very educated. And I wanna make sure that we have the same thing here. Now, I understand the state is going to put in some standards and some tests, but the question is, is it possible to still get a diploma, I was told yes, not taking those core courses where the state's going to test? So is it possible to get a diploma here without having to even demonstrate that you can, for example, calculate a tip on a restaurant bill, calculate a commission? And I did read too, there was a couple articles in the Springfield papers while I was gone, I was reading those, and they said that, two editorials were about the need for standards, Mississippi putting statewide standards, and they've actually had scores go up. So in other words, the world has standards. The world says to get a grad, to get a high school diploma, you need to have a certain amount of literacy in math, reading, writing comprehension. Somebody should be able to read a paragraph without any help and be able to answer basic questions. Somebody should be able to do basic calculations and basic math to get a diploma without having a workaround. And I think that allowing some people to get a diploma with workarounds is, takes away the value of it for everybody else. In other words, you, you earn something, but if somebody else get the same diploma without really even being able to add two and two, what's the value of the, of the diploma for anybody? So, given those things, given the fact that, you know, that, that, I think the state's going in the right direction, which requires something, we are allowed to still have tests, there should be a way to make sure that it's not just passing those courses, that you have to demonstrate proficiency in those courses without, without, or in all, in certain areas, you shouldn't be able to take a course that bypasses the test, or you shouldn't be able to graduate in an alternate way without having to just demonstrate a minimal proficiency in reading, writing, arithmetic, and civics. So that's where I was proposing, you know, an amendment to that, if, that, that we make sure that there's certainly a minimum competency, and these can be in that state test, any test we come up with, teachers, whatever it is, that make sure that everybody that we stand on the stage and give diplomas, they, and I think Minnetoka doesn't have much of trouble with this anyway, I'm talking about nationally, and, and I don't wanna see any ways around, now that we have no MCAS tests here. I mean, I, I was surprised, and the teachers' union really fought in Massachusetts, other states and people, what I mentioned, they got rid of in Massachusetts, people really can't believe it, in terms of, you know, holding people to, to standards and having minimum competencies. Not only for giving extra help to people that need help to pass those tests, I'm not, I'm happy to, you know, I think we should do that. And I think John said last year, only six or seven people really didn't pass MCAS in the long run. You know, you know, out of all of our people, that's really hardly anybody. But nowadays, could they get a diploma next year, you know, without having, without even being able to pass MCAS in a sense? Because we're not requiring it anymore. So I would like to propose an amendment that, that we make sure people not just pass the courses, that they have to demonstrate without electronic help, by being, taking some kind of minimal test in, in class and school, that have a certain base of competencies in civics, math, and reading.
So Rich, to just clarify, clarify the amendment you're proposing, you're attempting to propose an amendment to IKFE, which is the competency determination, which is necessary in each of the defined subjects, to meet graduation requirements. Are you, are you proposing that the finals and midterms are given more weight, so that a student can't, can't graduate if they fail the midterm and final? Or are you proposing the creation of some other test? I mean, it's, everyone understands the Pandora box that was opened with the removal of the MCAS requirements, and, and I voted to get rid of the MCAS requirements, because I really felt that our teachers and our courses and the coursework and stuff, but it has opened the box to how important it is to now have these defined competency determinations, and how the graduation requirements are now attached. So you've got to be clear for what you're proposing for an amendment, so that other members of the committee can decide if they want to second.
Well, midyear, midterm and final tests, at least when I used to teach, was made for each teacher, you know, and each teacher could make them as hard as they want, as easy as they want. So I would, I'm still looking for some sort of, you know, obviously, in lieu of a national test for the US, which I think should have, in lieu of a statewide test, now every state's on their own here, I'm looking for some kind of competency.
We can only set the policy for our district.
Correct, correct. And so in lieu of those things, we should have a district test that everybody takes, that demonstrates a minimal competency, similar to MCAS, because, by the way, they said the school committees could actually require MCAS still on an individual basis, even the voters, or not too, but you could have an off-mid test, something that's out there already, not somebody has to create, that says, if you pass this test, you can read it at tenth grade level, eleventh grade level, whatever we say for minimum, to be able to know that everybody that gets out of here has passed some kind of test, that, you know, to show that they have certain competencies. By the way, one last thing, is the military lowered their standards, because they couldn't find people, they said, one of the things, and they're having remedial classes now, because one of the questions was, they said, we took people in, that, you know, we used to require people to be able to calculate a commission on a sale or something, and they couldn't do it, so now they have remedial classes, you know, just to join the army. So shouldn't we say that maybe you have to pass the army test in order to graduate high school, be able to have some kind of competencies? Because people are coming out of high schools with diplomas that can't do the basics, and that's sad.
So do you, are, are you intending to propose an amendment that our school district follow the previously existing MCAS score requirements? Because the students are all still taking the MCAS.
Yeah.
Because they're a grade of the schools. Is, 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 that's a test that's already in place and being given? Are you, is, is that what you would like to propose as your amendment?
I don't think I would propose that exact test, because obviously, the voters, you know, based on advertising and things, maybe not knowing what they did, didn't do it. So obviously, for our district, there should be some kind of test, decided by the superintendent, decided by the teachers, that, that can be a standard test that you can buy, that shows you have a minimum of whatever level they decide to get a diploma, in math, reading, writing, some testing, everybody has to take. It's the same for everybody in this district, and you have to pass it with whatever minimum score they come up with in order to get a diploma, as opposed to just passing the courses, which you can pass by turning in all your homework, having your computer do the homework for you, you know, putting portfolios in, without having to demonstrate that you really know the material for any, any of it, anyone.
Is there anyone? So I think Rich is now looking for someone to second his amendment, so we can continue discussion.
I'll second it for a purpose of discussion, and I have some questions.
Hey, one quick question. So do you believe that students are not proficient, are, are not demonstrating proficiency if they do well in the class and they don't do well on the midterm or final?
Yes, I'm saying that I believe that you can, you can, as a former teacher, you can try hard, but nowadays, even more so, with computers and AI, you know, do a lot of the homework, a lot of the papers, a lot of the tests, how do you determine if you can add two and two? You know, it's, you know, in fact, if you fail a midterm, and I'm not saying a difficult midterm, I mean, these other countries all have very difficult tests, a large portion of the people don't pass, and they do that on purpose, because if you want to study hard to pass those tests. In our place, you can get out of school, but out of high school, I knew this back then, you know, you graduate, some teachers, there wasn't any MCAS back when I taught, and there are teachers that graduated kids, just when you're ready to go to school, I'm here with the kids, and they graduated when they were not ready to go on. And they weren't even ready for, and if you look at even community colleges, finding kids who are trying to go to community college that are not able to do the basic work, because they're graduating high school without the basics, to get to succeed in community college. Now, I'm not saying these are, I guess they're all Minnetoka kids, but I'm saying for high schools in general, and I don't want us to have a way, a kid that gets out of here should be able to go to stick and do well. You have the basic math and reading and writing, and they're finding they don't have that.
Okay, Rich, I got a couple of quick questions for you. When you said the military example, were any of those kids that, that the military was seeing as being some par from the HWRC?
No, I'm not saying they are, I have no idea.
Were the students that you're saying that, that can't have a one-on-one together to get two, where, you know, don't know the basics, do you know, do you have any statistics that prove that our students from the HWRC are those kind of students?
No.
Okay. Do you have any idea of the cost of this new test, what it would cost to put it together?
Nope.
Do you have any idea about who decides what level is passing and failing for whatever test we decide to come up with?
Nope, it's open.
Okay, if we have the test, would we, would we need to have finals and midterms? Would those even matter? Should the students not have tests in their senior years and just have this, this exam that you would like?
Well, actually, no, I think that to pass courses, there should be a midterm and a final, it should be part of it. In fact, many states, though, like what you're saying, there are many states, even New York, with the region's grades, you can actually not go to school, if you pass the region, you're passing the course.
Yes, but I'm talking about the HWRC, and I'm talking schools outside of, of the HWRC.
The question is, is it possible, and I don't know, is it possible, where you said six kids didn't, couldn't grad, didn't pass MCAS and didn't get a diploma because of that, only six? And they had to work hard with the kids to get a lot of the others, from what I've been told, to be able to pass the MCAS. You know, they worked with them, they gave them remediation, they helped them pass it. So now the question is, without this MCAS, are we gonna have kids getting diplomas that do not have, don't know the basics? Is it possible to get through the system, to sneak through the system, take certain courses, and graduate? I'm not an expert on this, you know what it is, I just think there should be.
Did you know anything about those six students, that maybe some of them had severe learning disabilities or special needs?
I, that's what I heard in the office. I, that's what I heard, should, so that's the question. Should somebody with severe learning disabilities have the same, the same high school diploma that everybody else gets? That's the question.
Another, another thing to consider is, we, we just sat through to, we, we listened to the accountability report from Dr. Provost, we listened to the school improvement plans, and we, we hear about all of the benchmark testing and all of the evaluations that happen with students to evaluate their progress, and to really make sure that they're targeting, to make sure that they are, you know, when they move on from grade to grade. So I think that's something to consider. So it's not just a high school issue, I mean, it's an entire, you know, we can look at the student as a whole, so are we passing, are we just like feeding kids through, you know, our district and just saying, you know, we just want you out of here, like from an earlier point, but we do have a student here that is interested in making a comment, so they're all a part of this.
I actually have a question for you, before you make your comment. What is one plus one? Two, okay, please, could you make your comment?
So from a student perspective, I guess, like, you were talking about, like, even community college, like, students not being able to be, I guess, fully competent for, like, getting into community college and, like, knowing the basics, but to get into those college classes, like, right now, through HCC, I'm doing dual enrollment, because I'm still a junior here, so I'm doing my dual enrollment, but to be able to do that and decide what classes you're gonna take, you still have to take that benchmark test there, so it's not like you're just gonna go apply and go to a college, or go do something and be able to get in, you still have to take that test and pass it. So I guess for these students, if they really are gonna sit here and just cheat through or use technology through, they're only cheating themselves and they're not cheating anyone else. And I understand what you're saying, that we need the test, but students, they have extracurriculars, they have other stuff, and they, it's a lot of stress on them as it is finals and midterms, and then four years later, or if you're doing it from, like, everything you learn from K to 12th grade, and you're gonna take a test at the end of senior year, or even four tests for all different sides, like, that's putting a lot more weight on those children, and it's a lot more pressure. I also know at a state level right now, the student board that I'm working with, for the state, we are working on passing the S.2665 bill, which is an act to relative, relative to student financial literacy, meaning, we basically are trying to get the state to approve that, in some way, we need to cover certain topics, like you were saying, like, knowing how to do tips, like, I'm gonna personally be honest, I haven't gone over that at job, like, I've learned that through, outside of school, through families, going out to dinners, like, I've learned that type of stuff through that. So I feel like, even as you were saying, within our schools, we are still lacking the necessary classes to get to those certain points. So I feel like before you can get a test, you need to make sure your staff and administration are making sure those topics are covered before testing students on something they've never been taught before.
Excellent, and can I ask you another question?
I love that comment, by the way, I thought that was wonderful. Tips, this really has to do with just knowing your stance, what's twenty percent of a hundred? That should be covered in that somewhere along the way. So I, I think I said this before, Rich, that the reason I voted against the MCAS requirements is not because I didn't want students to have the knowledge, but, you know, filling in circles on a multiple choice exam, which is necessary way to do it, so they can grade a billion of them in ten seconds, isn't, isn't the only way to establish competence in knowledge. And, and I think that there are, that there are many students that have a very high competence and knowledge in topics, but, but for various reasons, cannot perform coloring in circles as like a trick monk, you know, like a trick monkey would, you know, on the multiple choice test, and, and, and some of those students are, some of them can be among the most brilliant, and, and, but yet penalized by, by the rigidity of the standardized system, which is why many colleges have gotten away from requiring SAT scores and ACT scores, for that exact reason, that, you know, that some of the most brilliant students don't perform well on multiple choice exams, because they're not a trip pony, not because they're not brilliant. And so that's, that's the main reason I voted again in favor of getting rid of the MCAS requirement, although I respect your comments, I'm not in favor.
Yeah, I would, in terms of, I'm not looking at, SATs can be very difficult tests, they are graded on a standard deviation curve, but I'm looking and saying, should somebody get out of you, you said, what's fifty percent of a hundred, you had twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five? Somebody should be able to bubble in what the right answer is. In other words, we're not talking something difficult, we're not saying calculus, we're saying, somebody should be able to take a test, no matter what job you have, no matter, nowadays, when you're working with anything, you have to read instructions and answer a question on a sheet and questionnaire, and our people should be able to do that to graduate high school, the basics.
All right, does anyone else have a, a comment that they'd like to make on this proposed amendment before we vote?
Yeah, just another quick thing. So I know there's this myth going around that, that computers can do kids' homework, okay? So, and I'm gonna ask you in, in, in a second, for your personal experience with it. So I work for a company, and we use AI a lot, and I tried to create a picture of a package with the word concessions written across the front, and it gives you twelve with the word concessions written across the front, and it gives you 12 different, example, I believe it's called Party Rock, it's a, it's an AI that you can use for creating pictures. It's been, I put some time into it when I can here and there, I cannot get it to spell concessions right. Okay? And they give me 12, they show me 12 different, you know, here's an origami version of it, and here's one that's a punk rock version of it, and here's one, a Disney version of it, and it gives you all the different things, and I can't get it to spell concessions right. And I am really good at AI now, especially because of how much we use it, and I'm just telling you, so this thing that like, oh, here, computer, here's my homework, just do it, I, I really think that's maybe a fear of what could happen in the future, it's not happening now. But why don't we ask a student over here, do you have computers do your homework for you?
I've never had my homework, or my computer do my homework for me. I'd say technology definitely has had an impact on the learning, so I do have to agree with him on that aspect of it. I personally know people who do do that or they'll use it, like even before ChatGPT and all that, they just ask their friends, can you send me a picture of this, can you send me a picture of that? So I guess there's always going to be a way around them still doing their own work and they're going to find ways to do it, whether it's that or, I know tons of people who have talked about, oh yeah, they gave it to me at lunch, like there's always going to be ways around doing your work, whether it's technology or not technology based. I'd say also the technology aspect of it is also a very beneficial thing. I've had teachers who I didn't really just understand, so like I go back to the technology, I look up a better understanding, for example, like Khan Academy has been very useful for me, or even Quizlet, just to find like understanding like vocab or like understanding a topic that I didn't understand and I wanted to go back and try and learn on my own, so I find it beneficial.
Did AI just write that speech that you just did?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, so maybe when you're, maybe this was true for your children when they went to school, you weren't supposed to use a calculator because that was cheating, but when you think about it, when you advance into the workplace where you were in college, you were able to use a calculator and it's been a very useful tool to most people in their profession and in their adult life.
I'd like to say something, it, it seems to me that one of the aspects of all this is that we're not all the same. And for those families who have children who are on special needs and they have to take the same test at the same time so that they graduate in lockstep. We have to get away from that because those, those kids who go through that, they're stigmatized even today, they are, and they also catch up, they find their niche. It also depends on their, their rearing, do they, do they want to not learn, but can they, can they push themselves by virtue of still being, having disabilities? And we have, nobody's even brought up that word, I'm sorry I had to leave for a second, maybe you did when I left, but learning disabilities is huge, and so why should a kid coming out of middle school who has no learning disabilities be judged on a standard that a kid who's been in special ed for five years?
The real question, no, I, I respect, by the way, everybody giving me a chance to speak and to express my opinion, and the question is, as an employer, somebody comes in with a diploma from Massachusetts, it'll mean nothing going forward, I have to sit somebody down at a computer and say, okay, you can't use anything, I want you to write a letter to a potential customer, you're right, not somebody that's going to do it for you, bring it in. Can you answer these basic, you know, math questions, because no matter what job you have, can you find countries on a map, you deal with countries all over the world, do you even know what continent Ecuador is in? In other words, it's amazing the questions we ask, they don't know, and they're coming into my office and they say, we got a high school diploma, and I don't know how in the world they got it, so the question is, should everybody, does everybody, this is a big question you're asking, you know, does everybody deserve a high school diploma, what does it tell an employer? And the rest of the world, it means you have a basic knowledge of certain things, you can function in certain much of the test, I believe in helping everybody you can possibly help, but should everybody get a diploma even if you can't add two and two? That's the question, just because you came and you attended, that's the question, you know.
Rich, a quick question for you. Why, why don't we do that at the college level? And when you graduate college, why don't you have to take an exam, just because you have a college diploma, doesn't mean, you know, where Ecuador is on the map? Why don't we do it at the college level?
Certainly when you go and get hired by a company, the company's doing their diligence, they're going to give you their own test to figure out if you can do that, if you go to graduate school, somebody had to pass an MCAS, somebody had to pass a law degree, graduate exam to get into those colleges. So yeah, I mean, you can, you can fudge your way through anything, you know, if, if somebody else later on doesn't actually check you, see if you really learned something. In other words, when you come out, can you read or write? You wouldn't believe, somebody, you know, somebody can write me a letter saying why they deserve to, you know, you know, just to introduce your letter for employment, and then when you set them down at the computer and say, here, take 15 minutes and write a made-up letter, and they can't do it, it's somebody else, or they had it done by AI, they had it done by whatever. So I have to go test, can they even write? Can they read? And I'll tell you, you just, again, I don't see Minichats doing this, but when I get some of these letters from people from overseas, their English, their grammar, their, their skills are way higher than a lot of the people that are applying with high school diplomas, you know, from the United States. And again, there's so many other jobs out there, nobody said you have to have a high school degree to be a fantastic plumber, electrician, make tons and tons of money, go into the trades, you know, the question is, what should a diploma mean? Does it mean you attend school, or does it mean you learned, you know, you have a basic skill in reading, writing, civics, which is the way it is in the rest of the world? Not in the United States, every other country, I couldn't find one that doesn't have a certain, a test, a national test, to make sure you have a certain competency when you have a high school diploma in those countries. And if we choose to, again, I think we do a great job in Minichat, and I think if you look at the high-level students that we have here, they're not, they're not cheating to get through, but if they did, it would come through in college or wherever they went afterwards. Even if you're, you have to have math skills to be a plumber and electrician to do anything, you need to have skills, math, certain kind of writing, certain kinds of comprehension, reading instructions, reading manuals. And I'm just saying, you know, there should be a basic, basic competency that we make sure we have, but I want to say I really appreciate everybody here letting me speak my piece, you know, from my seat, and I respect your opinions and I respect your questions, what a high school diploma means, so that's the only thing I'm throwing out there, what it does mean. Again, I appreciate the chance to be here.
All right, I'm looking for a vote as to whether you're in favor of Rich's proposed amendment to IKFE?
Could I speak to it?
Oh, of course, Ken.
Yeah.
I, I had asked before if anyone wanted to make a comment, you were quiet, and so I was like, oh, maybe he doesn't want to talk, I'm not going to make him talk.
After watching the presentations of the two principals and the work that they and their staffs are doing, I have every confidence in this school district. MCAS is a one-size, it's all test. You could have a brilliant student in mathematics, struggles with reading, denied diploma, because you've got to pass all of the MCAS sections. MCAS is not going away, and I wish it would, because schools shut down their teaching for a week or two to give the test. I have every confidence in our teachers and Massachusetts students are number one on the national assessment of educational progress, and the students in this district are in the top quarter percent of all the students in Massachusetts, I don't know what the exact number is, but I have confidence that our teachers are doing what they need to do to give the kids the skills they need to survive in life, so I'm going to vote against this.
Okay, once again, those in favor of Rich's amendment to IKFE?
Aye.
That's good. Okay, you changed it.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the amendment fails to pass, this is now the official second reading of IKFE competency determination.
What about IKF?
Oh, sorry, I thought I did that one, yeah. IKF graduation, IKF graduation requirement, second reading as well. Once again, the only change to this was to basically delete most of it because it contained all competency requirements initially, and they're in their own policy now.
Do you have another meeting scheduled?
We don't, we don't, and do, do we have an anticipated need?
I don't, I don't see any new regulations, there may be something coming up with school nurses that will require policy, but until we have something that requires adjustment to policy, I would recommend we steam down.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey Mike, thank you for all the hard work, that's a lot of information, so to you and the team, thank you.
Well, we will continue with the LPB Corporation representative, Mike, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
And nothing to report on the superintendent evaluation, we'll continue with the MAS C representative, we will vote with the MAS C resolutions.
All right, everybody, so I get to, to dawn my metaphorical brass knuckles and get ready for this meeting. The, there are, what do I, have I counted eight resolutions? So I would like your thoughts and how you would like us to vote for resolution number one, removing BMI testing from schools. Basically, it was a test developed in 1832, measuring adult male, presumably all white, doesn't act, this resolution says it does not accurately represent racial or ethnic differences in normal body composition and normal development shifts as students move through puberty, but it also does not differentiate fat from muscle mass or fat distribution of the body. And also, an interesting quote that this said, that whereas studies show that 50% of pre-adolescent girls and 30% of pre-adolescent boys dislike their bodies, it's inside your paperwork. Okay? Yeah, I, I will be very clear and give you all kinds of great information. So do, do we agree with this resolution? Does anybody have any, any issues against it?
So this is, the resolution is to remove the body mass index?
Testing at school.
Yeah, remove the bottom, they have testing for this, where they have the kids come in and they test them, just not to do the testing in the school.
So the MAS C urges the express banning of BMI screening in all public schools?
I am completely against this amendment. Obesity is an epidemic in this country and measurements gathered in the schools get fed into national databases in the CDC, helps us track our progress through this horrible epidemic that's plaguing adolescents throughout the country. So I, yeah, I would be very much opposed to, it, it is, you know, by measurement, it is the height and the weight, those are the two measurements.
No, BMI is not just height and weight, body mass index, where they tape the little pinchers.
That's how you calculate the body mass index, you use just the height and the weight.
What about the, I thought they use the little pincher things?
Yeah, no, that's the more sophisticated stuff. Yeah, there's, there's many other ways to kind of adjust and look at concentration in back of your body as well, but you talked about body mass indexes from a long time ago, that's why it's the simplest measure, but it is relatively straightforward.
Yeah, so the question is, what, does anyone at the other table know, when do they do this and do they, how, what are they doing then with the information that they're gathering? How are they addressing it and utilizing this data?
Can we ask our student down there, have you had this test taken?
I don't think so, I can think of, the nurse has done the pullouts of the height and weight, and we have done like the scoliosis in the gym with the gym teachers, other than that, we haven't really done that at Chauk that I know of.
But is he in weight?
But you have your height and weight checked?
Yes, we have had our height and weight checked, I haven't had that done this year. Sometimes people would be curious, so we'll ask trainer Jess to do the pinching one that he was speaking of.
So I'm wondering if they do this at other times, throughout their time in the district?
I don't know, this is not a measure that we keep track of in the central office.
But I do know that, I do know that that was, it was done at Soul Road, I can't recall if it, what happened at both grade levels or if it just one particular grade level, but we can check with Jen Paulski on that, the procedures for that.
Is this treated similar to other health screens that if they identify something that's concerning, then, then there's a recommendation made to follow up with their own physician?
I would say yes.
Okay.
But also their physicians do that same information. Can I ask you, it says in this, whereas BMI testing has not been shown to improve BMI scores, but has the potential to increase weight stigma. So in the time since this was done, when I was a child, you know, 300 years ago, and it's still been done now, so has weight and stuff like that, has that improved or are we now, as you just said, in a crazy epidemic? So is this something that's just not working?
So, so measuring the body mass index in and of itself only makes you aware of what your body mass index is. To change your body mass index, which is to lose weight, requires many significant interventions, both behavioral, you know, emotional and psychiatric.
Which are better loved to doctors than to gym teachers, correct?
Correct, but just like they screen for eye, they screen for back, so, so in the ideal world, every child is being seen annually by a pediatrician who is monitoring, right?
But they have to in order to get, to come into the schools, they have to get an annual checkup?
That, that's not true, and, and there's a reason that they screen for scoliosis and, you know, we have, we are.
I believe it is true. John, is it true that the students need a, a physical and a letter from the doctor each year in order to attend?
Not a physical each year to attend, students do need to provide shot records in order to enroll, they need to provide a physical for support's participation, but we don't, I believe, collect annual physical exam results.
So, so while many students in our district certainly do, this is for the entire state of Massachusetts, right, recommendation, so there are, I think there are districts where there are many more, you know, just like, I mean, when I was in grade school, you know, all of a sudden I get sent home with a note from my mother, you know, we did an eye test today, you better get into the ophthalmologist fast. And my grades went up.
Yeah, but this is not talking about eye tests, this is talking BMI?
Yeah, weight and height is among many of the standard screens they do. Do we standardly screen for lice just out of curiosity anymore? I can remember input through that.
I am not an expert in this area either, but I do not believe that's a routine screen, I believe that's on an as-needed basis.
I'm just, I was just curious.
All right, so all those in, in favor of the resolution, please say aye, or raise your hand just so I can see who's for it. Uh, yeah, to get rid of it, the amendment says to get rid of it. That's one, two, three, those opposed? One, two, okay, so the ayes have it.
So it's three. It was Tim, Mike and Cheryl.
Oh, okay, so it's three versus three.
I abstain.
And you abstained. All right, so I'll, I'll.
All right, we gotta re-vote, we gotta tie.
I'll, I'll call, it'll be my decision, I guess, I'll just call an audible based on the information that I find that they present when they present this, okay? Resolution number two, reauthorization of previously approved resolutions, it's a, something that they do every year, I don't know why they actually have it as an actual resolution, but, yes, ma'am?
I don't agree, if it was three to three vote, I don't, I don't think they could do anything except say, I would vote it instead of voting.
Would you? These are suggestions for me, I thought, or are these like, like because it's three to three, I say I can't vote on this one? Is that how you want to do it?
So I guess that can be a conversation, do a quick, a quick conversation.
This is the first time that's happened?
So if, since we're, since it was, you know, a tie, so do we want Sean to be able to make the choice for the committee, or should he abstain since we can come to consensus?
I brought it up, I have no, I'm fine with you going ahead after we discuss it, but since we did a vote, I thought we needed to honor what we voted, which is three to three, but if you want to put forward, like you said. But if you want to put forward what you said.
If we re-vote, I'd probably vote not to get rid of it, but, you know, vote with the doctors.
So why don't we take the way with the, since Rich said if he had to go back on the record, he would say to keep it, so.
Sure, if Rich wants to keep it, so then that, that brings it to there. Okay. Okay? And that was no by four. Okay? All right, but we should also talk about like, if I get new information there, usually the first vote, if there's just one vote, I say abstain or I say yes or I say no, right? Based on what the committee tells me. But then if more information, if they go and they have an amendment or something like that, I've been taking it on myself to say, okay, depending on the amendments and depending on what the committee has decided, I try to, with everything everyone says, I try to make my best decision moving forward. I don't do what Sean wants to do. I do what I think based on the amendments, what the committee would want. That's what I've done.
So in that case, you'll have to call John. John has to reach out to each of us individually.
Yeah, I'm not gonna do that. Someone else can do this if, if someone else wants to do it that way.
Sean is doing all the extra work to represent us, and so obviously he's gonna be in a position to take some prerogative. I agree with that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone against that? Okey-dokey. All right, so again, so they had some resolutions that, there's six resolutions that expire this year because what they did is they, we, I think this was last year or the year before, where there were like hundreds of resolutions that never, never anything was done with them and they just kind of sit there. So what we did is we would, if they don't get passed or if they don't turn into legislation in three years, then they fall off the docket. Okay? So there are some that's on here and I'll, I'll read them. I don't know if anyone had a chance to read them, but regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students, which actually is coming up again, to increase the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve, the member of the board of, of membership on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools, personal finance literacy education and establishing a regional school assessment reserve fund. So I can go over these. I think that these will be voted as a bundle. I don't know if they're gonna separate them or not, but just so I can get everyone's opinion on these. So regarding the sanctuary laws for transgender students that the MAS C called upon great and general counsel to join with other states in the passage of a so-called sanctuary law to ensure such children and their families have, quote, "the power to enjoy safety and tranquility, the natural light and the blessings of life," quote, "as guaranteed by the Constitution of the Commonwealth." So, and with regards to transgender, transgender issues, is this something that the committee, if it comes up on an individual vote, will support or do not support?
Support.
Okay, all those, how about, just, just show me a sign of hands. We're, we're kind of like on a line here, so I didn't see Cheryl before. I apologize. So all those who support? That's good, so that's good. And increasing the minimum balance allowed by Special Education Reserve.
It says maximum.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Increasing the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve, the MAS C calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to amend Chapter 20, Section 13 E by deleting 2% of the annual net school spending and by inserting the following 5% of the annual net school spending. There's more information that the 5% cap would allow reserves to grow to a substantial level, which hopefully would not be wiped out in a single year of special education-related expenses. It's just, it's allowing, it's giving us a little more power. Okay? Does any, all those in favor? Is that everybody? Cheryl, you good? Yep, okay. And then the next one is membership on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. I don't know if you remember this before, but if you are a sitting, practicing educator or sitting school committee member, you cannot serve on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. And they're trying to get that changed because wouldn't we want some educators and the school committee members on that board because, well, we know what it's like? So all those in favor of having it so that those individuals can participate if it so happens? And Desi, raise your hand. So aye. I think that's everybody. Thank you. All right. And then preserving local school governance, preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools. So basically, the MAS C calls on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to restore local governance and accountability to the Lawrence and Southbridge Public Schools, no later than July 1st, 2026, recognizing that Holyoke was removed from receivership on July 1st, 2025, putting control of the schools back into the districts rather than having Desi forever run these. Those in favor? Raise your hand. Okay, anyone opposed? All right. Michelle, was that a seven oh or is that a six and one as mentioned? Oh, okay, just one double check, just a one. There you go, seven oh. Thank you. All right. Personal financial literacy. Basically, MAS C filed legislation that would have the effect of ensuring that all students have exposure to personal finance literacy curricula and ultimately graduate from high school with the lifelong knowledge of how to be fiscally responsible to avoid being deterred by financial woes. This legislation would ensure that students at various levels would benefit from curriculum in Massachusetts Public Schools that would include content in personal financial literacy. There you go. All, all those in favor? Great, anyone opposed?
I want to abstain.
Okay.
If we're putting it in another statute as to how you get to be in a child plan, then what was all of our conversation about, you know, 15 minutes ago? Can the, can the state just say, we think this would be a good idea? We're gonna put this in and you guys can vote on it or not vote on it. I think it takes a little bit more thought.
Okay, I will bring that up as well. So six to one. Oh, okay, so six, zero, one. Is it one abstention? Okay? I duly noted and I will bring that up if I'm given the, the opportunity this week. What does it mean exactly? Yeah?
Put this in the graduation requirement or something.
Yep, understood.
We have a class on this in our district, but it's not mandatory.
No, it's not.
There is a class like this in our district and it's not mandatory.
Yeah, and, and this would make it mandatory for every student to take this course. And we're already jam-packed with courses.
The material, right?
So doesn't have to be. It's into other already made courses.
It could be, it could be covered as a chapter in a different, doesn't have to be a course in all different of the style.
Okay.
But maybe I have a question.
Right.
Yeah, no. I, I will bring up Cheryl's points and, and what Tim was talking about as well. Thank you. And the last one, I might need some help with this. John, I don't know what your familiarity is with, but it's about the establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund. And from what I gather from when this was brought up before, as well as what this is here, it's to amend Massachusetts general law to, to give it so that the regional schools will be able to put some money aside, you know, rather than have to give it back to the towns or something like that, to have a reserve fund. And I believe it's set up, not set up by the district, it's set up by the towns itself so that if there is a year where, let's say we have a, maybe a big hit from special needs costs and such like that, that this, they would be able to use this fund to help rather than have to go over two and a half percent. I, I don't know if I'm explaining myself very well, but yeah, Doug, can you?
I can speak to this a little bit. What happens in smaller communities and, you know, they're part of regional school districts, especially if you have a community that's much larger than the others. When you look at the formula for assessments, statutory, that, that sort of thing, you can have huge swings and a, you know, percentage swings in what the assessments do from one year to the next, even though enrollments don't change that much, just for a lot of different reasons. You know, what this would do is allow them to establish a separate fund distinct from E and D to allow, you know, and, and so I think the, the thinking is, is that by having it distinct from E and D, which has a, you know, a fiscal limit of 5% of the operating budget as its maximum, you can set aside this other fund for a distinct purpose in some ways, like a capital stabilization fund would be a parallel, it's sort of another resource for, for these regional districts to, to use to mitigate the huge swings in assessment from one year to the next. I think the challenge for any of these kind of districts to do, if they have this permission, would be to fund it and to build a, you know, that reserve, but at the same time, they're not allowed to do it now, so they have to work within E and D, which has a financial limit on it and, and you don't always want to spend all that down to zero either.
But I thought this was something that had to be set up by the towns.
Yeah, and the mechanics of it are, could be definitely that way, but, but again, it's, it's a, it's affording the flexibility to the regional schools and therefore their member towns to mitigate assessment differently than just by using E and D.
Yeah, okay. All right, all those in favor of this? All right, unanimous, all right, thank you. I'll report back on our next school committee meeting. I'm going down. I was gonna try to be there at the start on Wednesday. I took Wednesday off, but I'm actually performing a wedding at nine o'clock and then from that wedding, I'll be heading down. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just a sort of piece for Wobraham. And, and I'll be doing this, a beautiful young couple, their ceremony on Wednesday, so. And then after that, I'm heading right down.
Did we change that at the top?
Thank you. So we will continue with the consent agenda.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Consent. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So you're opposed? Okay, motion carries, seven, sir. Thank you. And we will continue with the superintendent's update.
Thank you. Beginning with our November 1st enrollment, the number was 2,839 students. That was one more student than October 1st. Now, moving on to my more substantive update on all of our improvement plans. This meeting, I'll be talking about our equity improvement plan, which calls for us to create a district data team this year. As you may recall, another action step in the plan focused on increasing data literacy of our faculty. That's something I believe we've made a great deal of progress towards and I think that can now say that this is a very data-driven district. And I think you saw some of that tonight. Nearly 50% of the slides the principals showed when discussing their school improvement plans discussed the data in some way. Most of the professional development days planned by Lisa and Josh include at least one session focuses on using data to make better decisions on behalf of students. And there are many, many teachers, school psychologists, related service providers and others in our district who can talk about measures of student success in a very sophisticated way. And I'm proud of the progress we've made as a professional community. I haven't mentioned it in a while, but I spend time nearly every day on preparations for the district review. Yesterday, my task was to complete an inventory of the assessments conducted in the district, which is a required component for the district review. By the time I was finished, I listed 24 different kinds of assessments students will encounter in their career in our district. That doesn't include midterms and finals. These are just district-wide assessments that all students are given. Some of these are given multiple times, so the number of times a student is assessed is much greater than the number of assessments in our inventory. The point is, there's a lot of data and a lot of expertise interpreting data already in our district. So as I wrote in the document you have in your packet, I struggled a little bit with this idea of a district data team. I wanted it to be something that could complement the existing systems in our district without replicating work being done by others or adding to the assessment burden for students. This brought me back to some of my early coursework in learning organizations where I first came across the idea of double-loop learning. The basic notion is that most continuous improvement models are single-loop, using errors discovered in each iteration to make improvements for the next go-round. The school improvement plans you heard tonight were essentially an example of continuous improvement models using a single loop. And this approach works. I think as you heard from the principals tonight, we're getting great results. Single-loop learning can allow you to get better at your current process, but it can also blind you to other solutions that might be more efficient. An example that's often given to just sort of explain what I'm talking about is early astronomy. As you know, early astronomers conceptualized the Earth at the center of the universe and they had models that were able to make predictions of, of the other heavenly bodies and they were actually quite accurate, but in each iteration, they would discover little mistakes. Things wouldn't be exactly where they explained them to be. And the models became quite complex with orbits inside of orbits inside of orbits, trying to predict the motions of the, the stars and planets. That's single-loop learning. The double-loop occurred when Copernicus showed that you could explain all the observations a lot better and with a lot less effort by simply putting the sun in the center. Sometimes you need a different idea. Sometimes you need to think about, even if your approach is working, could there be a better way of doing it? So my idea for the district data team is to set up, set it up as a second learning loop. I've presented the idea to the district leadership team and they're supportive. I think it's a way that I think we can truly complement the work that's being done by the school-based data teams. They will continue to use data to fix the learning problems that they see in their data. The focus of the district data team will be to consider whether the recurring issues we find in our data should be treated as symptoms that point back to the need to reconsider fundamental beliefs and assumptions that could be leading to the problems in the first place. So I'm planning our first double-loop learning session for November or December. The focus will be on examining the persistent achievement gaps we see for some subgroups of students. I look forward to sharing the results with you and with the district leadership team. And that's my report.
Thank you, John.
Any questions or comments, John? Okay. Our next meeting is Thursday, November 20th at 6:30 in the IRC. We do have the need for executive session pursuant to masterment of law. See Chapter 30A, Section 21A, free to discuss strategy with respect to effective bargaining with HWEA or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public party and the chair so declares. HWEA Unit A and C contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We will be adjourning from executive session, therefore not returning to regular session. So we will do roll call to move to executive session. Cheryl?
Aye.
Tim? Sean?
Aye.
Lisa?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Myself, aye, we're now returned and moved to executive session 8:40 PM.